And welcome to the meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Today is Thursday, August 6th. This meeting is being recorded by WCTV. It's also being livestreamed on WCTV. If we could have the political agents? We'll go ahead and get started. I know that Mrs. Morgan is coming today. She, we were just at a different meeting a little while ago. I'm sure she's on her way. First item on the agenda is public participation. Is there anyone here who would like to address the school committee? Do you guys just have a seat? Yeah, just state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Dylan Turner. I'm a student at Wareham High School going into my sophomore year. And honestly, I think going to school in person is pointless. There's no clubs, there's no sports, no extracurricular activities at all. It's just, um, what's the word? Pointless risk. I think if the teachers devote themselves to finding a good system for online learning, I think that would be fine on its own. If, if there is an option to go to school or just do complete remote, I think that would be fine, sign a waiver so you can attend school in person. But I think if there is no waiver, don't let them go because there are kids who can't risk getting this virus and spreading it to family members that are at risk. I have two that are at risk. Even like half of my stepfamilies at risk. It's a problem if I do get it. And I just don't think it's worth it to open up the school, even if it is two days a week. There's no point.
Okay. Thank you, Dylan, for sharing. Does anyone have any?
Thanks, Dylan.
Would anyone else like to address the committee? Deanna?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing me time to speak on this important issue. I've been very vocal on my beliefs about this, and that has not been very popular. But I do have to recognize the fact that I represent over 300 members of the Wareham School staff. And I have to know at the end of the day that I have done what's right by them. So your charge is not an easy one today. Your decision will affect the daily lives of students, parents, and the adults who care for the children in the school. As you make your decision today, please keep in mind that we shouldn't be comparing schools to other professions that have reopened, such as retail or restaurants, or those that never closed, like hospitals and convenience stores. Schools are not businesses. They're not making a profit. They will not receive large sums of money from wealthy donors. They've been under-resourced for years. Knowing that this disease is airborne, but knowing the problems our school buildings have with their HVAC, even pre-COVID, is very concerning to me when I think of rushing into a hybrid model. In our survey to staff, 70% stated they did not think the district would be able to provide adequate sanitization supplies, not because you didn't want to, but because you lack the funds to do so. Our survey also showed that 60% of our staff were in or lived or cared for someone in the high-risk category, 60%. If 60% of our staff were mandated to work in buildings without the recommended health and safety protocols in place and without adequate HVAC systems, would they even be able to return to teaching? As you consider how to vote, please do not listen to statements based on opinions that change constantly. We have heard children do not contract the virus, children cannot spread it, only to read articles of schools shutting down because of an outbreak. We have all read about the deaths of teachers in Arizona and New York. We are in a pandemic. Teachers are able to reach families and teach students without face-to-face contact. We learned trial-by-error in the spring, and now we know what we need to improve on in remote learning to be successful. Please allow us to work in a safe environment while keeping our students safe at home. Our request is a simple one: put students, staff, and their families' health at the forefront of your decision. I urge you to vote for a remote-only learning until a time when our buildings are safe. We teachers want to see our students face-to-face more than anything, but we do not want to be responsible for them getting sick or worse when we could deliver our instruction in a safer way. And just before I was leaving, I got this email from a high school teacher. I just thought this was poignant. He's paraphrasing a rabbi at the 9/11 memorial service who quoted, "160,000 people have not died of this virus, but one person with a name and a face has died 160,000 times. Five million people have not been infected with the virus, but one person with a name and a face has been infected five million times." I think we need to consider that if anyone gets sick or worse, it will be someone we all know, and it will not be a nameless statistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Caitlin Franchi. I am 27 years old, and I teach music at Wareham Middle School. I am here today to talk about my concerns as they relate to the reopening of our school buildings. On March 13th, education as we knew it changed. Dr. Shaverhood announced that our buildings would be closing for the next two weeks. Days later, Governor Baker announced a longer closure, which eventually led to the buildings being closed for the rest of the school year. Teachers around the Commonwealth started scrambling to get their lessons online and follow guidelines that were constantly changing. Although the buildings were closed, the educational process did not stop. We did our best with unprecedented circumstances. Despite the challenges, we constantly adjusted our practices to provide engaging, challenging, and innovative lessons for our students. Last March, when buildings were closed, there were 123 cases of COVID-19 in the state of Massachusetts. As of August 4th, there were 111,033 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the state of Massachusetts, 438 of those being newly reported. If it wasn't safe to be in school in March, how is it safe today? In recent weeks, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has released reopening guidelines for schools to follow. Upon reviewing them, it is clear to see that they do not align with the recommendations provided by the CDC. For example, CDC guidelines suggest, quote, "putting six feet of distance between yourself and people who don't live in your household," end quote. Yet, the DESI guidelines for reopening our school buildings state, "schools should aim for a physical distance of six feet when feasible, and three feet is the minimum distance allowed," end quote. In an attempt to process the guidelines and new expectations for the upcoming year, I have started to journal, and I wanted to share an excerpt of one of those entries with you today. My life is valuable. I am not expendable. Children's lives around the world are valuable. They are not expendable. When I decided to become a teacher, there were certain things I accepted, things like the fact that my lessons were going to be interrupted by fire drills, that my students probably would not understand a concept on the first day, and I would have to review, 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 that assemblies, testing meetings, teacher-student conferences were all going to affect my time on teaching. I have accepted that I may have to be a human shield for my students. I have accepted that every 45 days, I have the same emergency conversations with my students about what the plan is for a fire, a shelter in place, or a lockdown. I have accepted that during those conversations, I will inevitably be asked, "But what about you, Mrs. Franchi? What will you do?" And my answer is always, "I will be the last person to leave the room. Do not wait for me or hold the door open for me. During an emergency is the only time that I will get upset at you for waiting for me," followed by the deafening silence of the students realizing that that means I may not exit the building. I have accepted all of this, and I live with all of this. I may not like it, but I knowingly signed up for it. Now, here we are in the midst of a global pandemic, and I am being asked to put the health and well-being of my students, my family, and myself at risk. We are not expendable. We did not sign up to put our health and wellness at risk. There are very serious questions about the safety of reopening schools. I desperately want to return to my classroom with my students, but only when it's safe. Here are some of my concerns. Why is it important to maintain six feet of distance in a public place for short periods of time when we are asking students to sit in the same classroom for multiple hours a day at a distance to three to six feet, possibly not wearing masks? Have the HVAC systems been updated to handle the new ventilation requirements, such as increasing the percentage of outdoor air, increasing total airflow supplied to occupied spaces, and improving air filtration? Where are we getting the PPE we need according to the guidelines? Is a school district going to provide or reimburse staff members for PPE? How are we able, going to be able to interact with our students while standing in the designated teaching zone? What happens when we catch COVID? Who will cover our classes? Will the entire school have to quarantine? What happens if a spouse or a family member gets COVID? Will my classes have to quarantine? What happens if my spouse is a teacher in another district and contracts COVID? Will both schools have to shut down? What happens when a teacher doesn't recover? Or worse, what happens when a student doesn't recover? These are just a few of the myriad of questions I have. Since school ended in June, I have put in countless hours attempting to research, develop lessons, and update curriculum to reflect the three possible teaching models that are being considered. I know that's impossible, but until today, it has kept me sane. Until today, it has kept me looking forward, finding the silver lining in this situation. But today, that changed. Today, I realized it doesn't matter what I do to prepare for the upcoming school year because everything is going to change on a regular basis. Today, I realized that if our school buildings reopen, I will be a part of the statistics for COVID. Maybe I'll be an asymptomatic carrier. Maybe I'll get sick but recover with lifelong effects. Maybe I won't recover at all. Or worse, maybe I'll have to grieve the loss of one of our students. I was not prepared for this realization, but here I am, trying to make sense of it all. Usually, this time of year, I'm giddy with excitement at the beginning of a new school year. My shopping list for back-to-school includes fadeless bulletin board paper, borders, bulletin board kits, notebooks, pens, binders. I could go on and on. But this year, as with everything else, this year is different. This year, my back-to-school list includes a home office setup, an ergonomic desk chair, a video camera, a whiteboard, headphones, masks, face shields, scrubs, school-only shoes, disinfecting wipes, power of attorney, healthcare proxy, and my will. Last October, I stood in front of you discussing our 85 middle school dance students, and you asked what you could do to help. Today, I am sitting in front of you, asking for your help. I urge you to connect the phased reopening of our school buildings to specific public health benchmarks for the safety of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Bridgette Kearns. I have two children that attend Wareham Public Schools, one in middle school, one in high school. And I'm probably on the other end of the pendulum from the people that you have heard from prior to this. I would be for full in-person schooling. My insight is a little bit different. I am a community healthcare worker. I have worked through this pandemic with coronavirus patients. But given my background in pediatrics, I've also worked with the children, the special ed kids, who were unable to access any sort of curriculum or special needs services. I'm an occupational therapist. I didn't mention that. So I recognize the fear that the teachers are bringing forward. And while I cannot, everybody has the right to their own fear. Sometimes I think the fear of something is bigger than the thing itself. And when healthcare, when this happened, and healthcare workers were asked to step forward and take that challenge, we didn't get, you know, months and months and months to dwell and wonder and why we just did. And I can tell you, in my experience, from a VNA agency where we provide healthcare in the community, there were a lot of staff, even healthcare workers, who refused to see coronavirus patients. They did the same thing. They were fearful, frightened. There were 20 staff of, we have hundreds of field clinicians, 20 staff stepped forward. I was the only OT to step forward despite the risk, despite having my own children at home, despite every child that I saw on the other, you know, I, you know, I have coronavirus patients and I have pediatric patients. Every parent who had these children, I said, "You do recognize that I am also seeing patients who have coronavirus?" And everyone said, "I do." And they recognized that risk, but knew that their children weren't getting what they needed. These aren't kids that can access remote learning. They can't. They need to be handled. I cannot handle an infant with Down Syndrome from six feet away. It's not just early intervention and schools. I cannot handle, you know, I cannot help a child from six feet away, you know, that's profoundly impaired with a seizure disorder. I have to handle them. I also have concerns. So I do recognize that there's fear, but I, sometimes I think the fear is bigger. And sometimes, there's a risk-benefit ratio, and I know there is risk for, for everybody to go back, but we have to weigh that against the benefits of in-person learning. And I have two kids who are great students. They're bright, they're social, they're engageable, they're motivated learners. And remote learning was a disaster for them. They were home alone, because my husband and I were both essential workers. But they got up diligently every single morning, got on the computer, did all their work. My son is disengaged. He loves school, and he has lost all his spark for learning right now. So that's heartbreaking for me as a parent to know that I not only cannot be home with them, because if I had a choice to be home at this point, I would homeschool them. I would pull them out altogether because remote learning was not a great option. I don't want them to be in a classroom in a mask. That's the other reason I'm here, because I recognize we don't really have much of an option, because people believe that masks are the thing that's going to protect them, not their own immune system, not their maintenance of their health, not nutrition, not vitamin supplements, not things that we do every single day, hand washing. I was actually disappointed. I don't know if anybody else looked at the DESI guidelines and clicked on the references to the studies that supported that wearing face masks reduced transmission by 80%. Did anybody else read the study?
I did not read the study.
Yes. So in my opinion, that is arguably one of the worst studies I've ever read. It's a, it's a retrospective cohort study. It's an observational study. They conducted telephone interviews of people within a household and determined what their habits and behaviors were. And people, their determination was, the only way the cloth mask was effective was when everybody wore in their homes at all times prior to any symptoms. So, and this again, you have so many other variables. You cannot, you cannot determine that the face mask was the thing. And that literally implies that we should all be masked at all times within our homes. Rather than, and DESI is supposed to be, you know, they're supposed to be giving guidance on quality education, but that's the study they pick, a biased study that was published in May. But they didn't look backwards. They didn't look back to 2015 to randomized control trials that demonstrate that cloth masks don't have any efficacy in viral transmission of other viruses. Now, this is a coronavirus, but again, so it's looking at different viruses, but it really is almost 0% efficacy. That study, in my opinion, while it has limitations, offers much more input on the efficacy of N95s compared to surgical masks, compared to cloth masks, and it's very limited. One of the things that cautions against, however, this was in healthcare workers, is that there's actual an increased risk of viral infection, respiratory viral infection with cloth mask arm of that study. The reason they believe you have increased respiratory risk with cloth masks is because of moisture retention, mishandling, and micro growth within the mask. So masks, even surgical masks, need to be changed 20 to 30 minutes in healthcare. Healthcare workers are taught how to handle PPE. We're taught how to put it on, remove it, take it off. I watch the community. I see what they're doing. The majority of the community are not utilizing them in a, in a manner where infection control has been established. Children aren't capable of that. And if you're wearing that for 30 minutes, an hour, two hours, if you're reusing your masks and you're not washing them, you are actually putting them at a greater risk for viral respiratory infection because, and for things that our children are at risk for. So I, I understand that there's mixed reviews about whether children are at risk for coronavirus or aren't at risk. Can they get it? Is it more of a mild cold? I get that. But what we do know they are at risk for is influenza and other respiratory viruses. So if we are putting masks on them that are damp, and they stay damp, and they're retaining them, and they're cross-contaminating, you're actually increasing their risk for respiratory viral illnesses that we know they're at risk for and we know they're transmitters of. So my preference, and I understand that there's no way that we're getting out of wearing masks. And I, it's my understanding that there will be training for teachers on proper use of PPE, how to dawn and doff and hand wash. Am I correct in that? And that there's some sort of training that the teachers would pass on to students about how to handle them properly, whether that really can be enacted or not. But I think we need to consider the safety hazards of masks, because this is not an article of clothing. And if you look at OSHA guidelines, which only pertains to workers, N95s and surgical masks have standards because there are hazards. So wherever there's a standard, there's a hazard. The time you're in a mask is dependent, just not only on your, whether you're tolerant of it or not, but what your environment is. So I get that we're going back later, you're not dealing with as much heat or humidity. But when you talk to a hospital worker who says, "I wear masks all day, and I'm fine. I'm in the community. I am not in a hospital setting who has HVAC heated in air." Hospitals are designed to increase airflow, including oxygenation, particularly in surgical suites. So there is a difference when you are wearing it. And as a community worker, I can recognize not only the difference in heat and humidity, but the airflow in a home. Some homes are closed up tight. And I've been wearing surgical masks for seven years in my job because I won't take a flu shot. My job has been held hostage over a flu shot, and I've been forced to mask. This is a same play. Education is being held hostage over this mask. And that's a whole nother political argument. But my, my experience in the community is not only that you have risk factors that are different than hospital settings because you're lacking HVAC, because you're lacking airflow, you're also looking at community hazards. So the first thing I recognized when I masked was going down a flight of stairs. I lost my peripheral vision of my feet. So when I, but as an adult and as a professional who works as an OT, I recognize that I have peripheral vision of my feet and that that was what was limited. So I knew to remove my mask when I'm on stairs. And if I'm on stairs with an elder, I certainly can't feel their feet, and I can see neither of our feet. So, you know, things like this, these hazards in the school, I think also need to be, so if you're going to teach children how to wear them and how to handle them, we also need to discuss what hazards we're going to be. Are teachers aware that maybe they need to be more cautious or give children cues when they're on staircases? Everybody needs to pay attention. These are things that I feel like I would be happy to support the school system in some of my insights with, because it's not just a benefit. We also have to consider the hazards. And because these are children, and because these are not workers, there are no OSHA standards, because OSHA only applies to workers. So we've looked, we've taken this. We have no standards, but that doesn't mean there's no hazard. There's still a hazard we need to address. I will certainly be teaching my children that the first signs of hypoxia, a headache, nausea, lightheadedness, and fatigue. Are your teachers aware that if their child or their student looks sleepier than normal, do they just assume they didn't get a good night's rest? Or should they be guiding that child to remove their mask and get air? Every person is different in how much they can tolerate breathing in a mask, how soon they hit that point. But those are the first signs of hypoxia. I will teach my children to self-rescue and break a rule before I tell them to keep a mask on their face. There's, you know, even dehydration, they, I need to know that my children are free to remove their mask and drink whenever they need to be hydrated. So these are things as a parent, I need to know, I need to have confidence that you guys are not just teaching them how to dawn and doff, but you are teaching them, and the teachers are aware of other safety hazards. The lungs alone are, just like your bowel and bladder, they're, they excrete toxins and waste products. Our lungs are responsible for excreting our carbon dioxide, and they're responsible for our pH. If our pH is off, our immune system tanks, so I know these are, you know, these are grand ideas that aren't helpful for you, but I think we really need to address what are the other risk factors to wearing masks in a classroom. I did hear from, I was on a Zoom call last week, I think it was, no, it wasn't Mrs. Potte. Mrs. Potte said they had emailed DESI, and that if the children are six feet apart at desks, they would be allowed to remove their masks. That was confirmed with Mrs. Potte. She emailed DESI and got that, that if they were sitting at their desks, is that not to your understanding? So they would be required to be in masks at all times. And what is the, what is the appropriate amount of time that a child can safely sit in a mask before they're given a break to breathe fresh air?
Can't hear you.
He can't hear you. Sorry. Right now, we're looking at 30 to 45 minutes before we'll do a break, but that's one of the things that we'll be looking at scheduling for every class.
And then how long are their breaks?
That's to be determined.
Okay. And how do you come to a number? Because even within OSHA guidelines, depending on the environment, what the, what they're doing, how much their energy they're exerting, there are work-rest breaks that are established. But because we are using this on children and outside of the scope of what OSHA guides, this is literally an experiment on our children with nobody monitoring or supervising the outcomes. Nobody will be looking at whether, you know, how many kids are complaining of headaches, and do parents recognize that these increased complaints are related to their prolonged use of masks? So my concern, I guess as a parent, is I want them back full-time. I, I would have them there in a heartbeat. I don't think remote learning is sustainable and adequate, but I recognize I will put them back in a classroom because that's where their preference is. I know that you guys cannot get around this mask use, but I think we really need to talk not just about the benefits, but about the risks of masks. This is not an article of clothing. You are covering their airway. Children have smaller anatomy. Their airway will be impacted quicker. Children will drop quicker. And you cannot even see, in a severe case, that their lips are blue because you've now covered their mouth. And they don't have the words, they may not be able to tell you, "My head hurts. I, I feel nauseous."
Thank you. Thank you for coming to share your thoughts. And I know that you've been a part of at least one of the building-level committees and...
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time here.
Have you been participating in the building-level committee for the reopening?
I have missed a couple. My, the emails were redirected to my junk. I volunteered early on, and I wanted to be a big part of this because this is important. My kids have thrived in the school system, and they're floundering. And right now, we're having a family emergency that is redirecting my attention. And right now, I'm here because this is how it is important.
Well, I do appreciate your comment, and I encourage you to continue to work on that building-level committee.
And I have offered multiple times to be part of those conversations, whether it's with teachers, whether it's during your training. If I can be there, I will. And I recognize that they're going to have to wear masks. But I also recognize that I think we cannot only focus on, like I said, the benefits. We have to consider the risks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Brian?
Geez, I was just manning the door on Mrs. Bakayaki. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Brian Fitzgerald, and I'm a 5th grade humanities teacher at the middle school. I'll begin by repeating something I've said to you earlier, and that is gratitude for the work that you do. I know you put a lot of hours into this. I know that you're under a public microscope. I imagine many people have opinions they freely and eagerly share with you when you go in public, and you don't get paid for it. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate you're even in a more difficult situation than usual now that the Commissioner of Education in Massachusetts, as I've seen discussed in other school committees, has begun a program of telling school leaders that he will extort districts unless they do what he says, but don't say that publicly. So I'm not asking you to confirm that publicly. At the same time, I think when you run for school committee, you kind of know what you're getting into. You're going to vote for a budget, you're going to vote on policies, you're going to evaluate the superintendent, you may end up hiring the superintendent. I don't know if traditionally, part of the job is a life-and-death decision affecting thousands of people. thousands of people. But that's what you're making here today, is a life and death decision affecting thousands of people. And making that decision, I hope that you will agree to look for guidance from Harvard University, from epidemiologists who have studied this. There are opinions, but there are also facts. I want to speak about the facts today. Um, the first fact is that coronavirus spreads really quickly among minors. There was a misconception at the beginning, but by now I imagine you've seen the CDC study that tracks that out of 344 tests in a summer camp in Georgia, 260 were positive. That came from one teenage counselor who had COVID-19. That study has been, um, excuse me, I'm ahead of myself. Closer to home, we have other examples. We have the 10 younger lifeguards in Falmouth who passed it to each other, the eight football players in Weymouth, the unspecified number of teenagers working at the ice cream shop in Whitman. We have the party in Cohasset that has the unspecified number of infections traced to it. July 31st, Governor Baker called gatherings of young people, I'm quoting him, "A recipe for disaster." And we're starting to know why. If you read the article in the Journal of the American Pediatric Association, confirmed by a study from the European Union equivalent, children carry a higher viral load than adults do. There's more of it within them to spread. Inside, outside, large, small groups, children get sick. Another factor knows that people die. You may know the name Kimberly Bird. Her school board said that it would be safe for her to share a room with two other adults to teach remotely during the summer. All three adults fell ill with it. Kimberly Bird died. Jessie Bird is a widower and her kids don't have a mother. Kimberly Wynn was 33 when she died. New York City leaders dithered and hemmed and hawed about closing schools in this spring and 30 teachers died. And when we talk about going back to school, um, other parts of the country are unlucky to serve as test cases for us as a grand experiment, a word that I heard. Greenfield, Indiana didn't make it to period three without a diagnosis. Mississippi has dozens of them. A second grade class in North Carolina is in quarantine. A fifth grade class in Georgia is in quarantine. 260 educators are in quarantine or sick in Gwinnett County in Georgia. Indiana has closed their school in Elwood. Tennessee has said, "We're not even going to track the cases because we're worried about what people might know." In Massachusetts, Desi just came out and said, "We're not going to track coronavirus cases in school." So we could have cases in the neighboring town and not know about it. We do know in Massachusetts that we have not had a R rate, a transmission rate below 1.0 since late June. The numbers are going up. The most recent state report, there were two-thirds as many cases now in Wareham as there were the day that we closed the doors and the numbers are going up. We're at the point where we're opening prisons so people can come out. We're at the point where Desi is refusing to let the public come into their offices while telling us that it's safe. Mrs. Kearns talked about a risk benefit analysis and I agree that's important. And if the hybrid learning, we're going to have an enormous benefit, it might be worth taking some chances with the lives of our students. Hybrid learning, the latest plan that I saw, a child would be in a classroom for two blocks of four hours over the course of a week. If a teacher is enforcing CDC guidelines, that means that education as you and I think about it will not look like that. There will not be any substantive partner work or group work. Speaking personally, many of my materials are class sets. Following CDC guidelines, I cannot use those materials, those novels, those textbooks. I cannot share the materials that I have purchased for manipulatives. I cannot allow access to my classroom library for the same reasons. So the things that I love and my students love, and I do love my students, won't be happening this spring. Improv role play theater, simulations of the trial of the soldiers of the Boston massacre, one-on-one conferences on written journals, making movies, um, writing conferences, those will not be able to happen following CDC guidelines. In short, it will be remote learning with the added risk of dying because they will be in a classroom that shares circulated air with the other rooms down the hall, as the ventilation system has always been explained to me. The, the choice here is, uh, you, we start with remote and I really do ask you to start with remote. I ask you to establish clear guidelines of when to go to hybrid now, not retroactively. The trade-off is if you end remote too late, some students will fall behind. I will not pretend otherwise. If you start remote too early, people may die. I'm a teacher. I can catch them up. We do that in Wareham. We can catch these kids up. If they're missing an intervention, if they're missing a skill, we will catch them up. It's what we do. That's why we do this. If a kid has a heart condition for the rest of their lives, like Eduardo Rodriguez of the Boston Red Sox, well, we can't catch them up. If a student spends the rest of their life wanting if they're the carrier and the vector that is the reason a grandparent or a sibling or a classmate or a teacher died, we can't remove that. And if a child dies, we can't fix that. That is the risk benefit analysis. The science is clear. The facts are clear from the experts. I've seen other school committees that attempt to take them out of context, to spin them so they can do business as usual. I'm confident the leaders in Wareham won't follow them down that path. I end by asking you again to vote for a return to full remote learning. People don't go back in the buildings until we know it's safe according to the medical and scientific benchmarks that you choose now. And the cool moment of deliberation. I will finish by saying that, um, I've spoken longer than I usually do and I apologize. I will finish by saying that, um, this is a lot more personal than other things that I've spoken to you about. And the reason is simple. Um, my four-year-old daughter does not have a black dress suitable for a funeral. And I don't want to have to buy one to go to her mother's funeral. And I don't want my widow to have to buy one to go to mine. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Brian. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the committee? Okay. Because of the venue of the meeting, I received many messages saying that there, there were those who wanted to come to public participation, but they weren't comfortable coming to this room. So I did give them the option of sending me a message, um, that I would read at the meeting. We received, I received many, many, um, emails that will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but there are a few, um, that did ask that they were read. And so I did say that we would do that. Ms. Ross, I know you have one, so you could go ahead and start.
So I received shortly before this meeting, um, an email from another student, um, a student from Wareham High School. He is the student body president. His name is Indiana Troop and he asked me to read a statement on his behalf. Students have tons of concerns that we feel aren't being heard by administration. Sure, there's a survey they sent out, but it seems like they only wanted to say X amount of students completed this survey and aren't genuinely listening to our concerns. Either way, the school committee makes a decision about school returning and not the individual schools. One of these examples is at the high school, we wear IDs on lanyards in order to stop intruders from coming in and stopping events such as school shootings. However, even though the wearing of IDs is for a great reason, some kids still determine that they are too cool to wear them or don't wear them. So who's to say those same kids won't wear a mask because they're too cool for it or even because their parents told them not to? And what can administration do because of this? Detention for not wearing a mask? A genuine safety concern. I, like many of our students and teachers and staff, live with an immunocompromised family member that makes my household at risk. My biggest fear is that other people's negligence leads to me getting them sick. Also, with restrictions like no clubs, no dances, no pep rallies, no assemblies, no advisory, limited electives, distancing and masks, maybe no sports again, no fans at sports games, is it even worth going back for the students? High school is an experience. It's not just reading, writing and arithmetic. All I hear adults in power say is kids want to go back, kids want to be in school. However, a majority of kids I've talked to as class president have all had great concerns about going back, such as the ones I listed above. We just want to have a say in this. After all, if the students say we don't want to wear masks and we don't want to distance, what's going to happen? We are the pivotal factor here. We deserve a large say in what happens as well. And we also deserve to be in the loop and not be the last ones to find out about everything just because we're the students. I hope that while keeping this in mind, the school committee and our administrators can come to an agreement on the safest and also best overall plan for the student body and our faculty and continue to listen to the student voices and our opinions on this matter. Thank you, Indiana Troop.
You want to read these? Okay.
You don't want to read them all?
Sorry. This one is from Elena M., who is a teacher at the high school. She had two concerns. Having two immunocompromised immediate family members and having voted for hybrid learning, I am not understanding why teachers cannot teach from home on Wednesday and in the afternoon on hybrid learning days. It would significantly reduce the risk of being exposed in common access areas. Um, for example, shared unventilated bathroom and kitchen storage with 50-plus teachers. Any administration, including superintendent and parents, are always welcome to join my Wednesday online class or daily extra help afternoon Zoom session. So why making teachers teach from the school building when there are no students inside after 12:00 PM or on Wednesdays? When we will also be breathing in chemicals as well when the building is being disinfected. Second, what specific consequences will students have for not wearing a mask, taking off a mask when not expected and for coming to school sick? Third, what specific medical diagnosis would allow a student not to wear a mask? Um, so that was from Elena. The next one is from Angela Morse. To whom it may concern, I'm writing to you about the school opening. I have a child that will be going into the sixth grade. I have a lot of concerns. My first concern is the bus. I myself have been on the bus while wearing a mask. It is very hot with a mask on while the windows are open. I don't see how these kids are going to be able to wear a mask on the bus without passing out. Same with the bus drivers and monitors. The buses were crowded before, never mind now, with needing to put the kids one per seat. The bus runs will be super long, even with only half the kids going. The risk of kids passing out is high. Second is the heat. No one wants to wear a mask in the heat. I can't see how the kids are going to keep their masks on. The schools do not have air conditioning. These kids will be in a mask for anywhere from five to six hours with travel. Third is that how are the buses in schools going to be cleaned? The buses do not have adequate supplies to do a deep cleaning. The bus drivers are also not certified to do the deep cleaning. I feel that we should go remote learning until January. I think that by that time, the flu and COVID-19 will hopefully have died down. I feel remote learning will have to do for now. The town doesn't have enough money to supply every bus with a monitor. The drivers can't be watching the kids to make sure they don't take off the mask. Thank you. And this one is from Kevin Buckley. He says, "I would like to ask you if you have thought of the consequences that wearing a mask for several hours on a hot bus or class can cause. I currently hold a CDL and it is very hot on the buses and even with the windows open, it's extremely hot. Are you prepared for children and bus drivers with the issue of passing out, especially if they have asthma or any other conditions? This is a long time to have the masks on. Have any school committee members actually took a 30 to 40-minute bus ride with stops and sitting for a minute or even three at each stop, then proceed to the next stop? Then to sit in a classroom for four hours? I really think this is something the school committee members and the superintendent should try. Now comes the cleaning of the classrooms and bus. From speaking with my nephew's driver, they are never given proper supplies for the buses and properly trained. A monitor is going to be supplied on all the buses. Federal laws are very strict and drivers are supposed to be in control of their vehicles at all times. Um, I truly believe that this situation needs to stay remote till this is under control and teachers need to report to their classes every day when they are supposed to be in class and kids can follow on Zoom. One last issue, if the teachers and drivers are seeing situations not be followed, please report immediately. These are our children's families' lives that are being put at risk. Thank you. All right. So there's two more, if you wouldn't mind, Mike.
All right. Happy to do so. Um, this first one is from Kyle Henderson. Um, says, "Hello, Joyce. Uh, thank you for taking my questions, comments into consideration during the public meeting. Uh, one, can Wareham Public Schools utilize the ball fields on campus, parentheses, making a 20 by 20 spray paint squares to conduct classes outside during COVID-19?" End for end. Uh, "This would mitigate the foot traffic inside and improve the social slash physical distance dynamics, perhaps only using inside, only using inside facility for poor weather." Two, "Can we utilize the college students from Bridgewater State who are going for their teaching degrees to homeschool our students for college credits? Uh, this would be beneficial to both parties, especially if our K through 12 are schooling from home and if students from BSU could receive credit. Greatly appreciated, Kyle." Uh, next one? Next one's from, uh, Brooke Murdoch and I apologize because if I had printed this out, I probably would have done a little bit bigger print for me. But, uh, but, but I'll, I'll try. It's pretty long. All right. Um, uh, so again, this is from, uh, Brooke Murdoch. Uh, "Good morning. Uh, I would like this email read at the upcoming meeting during the public participation section since I will be, since I will be unattended due to work schedule. Uh, I am reaching out as a concerned parent of two children in the school system. I understand the amount of strain and difficulty each district is faced with these, with, uh, faced with during these unprecedented times. I care about the teachers' well-being, the staff and all the students within the buildings. I will however like to say that I feel the proposed plan put forth is doing a high injustice to our students, especially the younger ones who have already been thrown into chaos since March when COVID first became a problem. I will try to be as brief as possible. With the proposal, with the proposal, our children are getting, with, with the proposal, our children are getting a mere eight hours a week of education. Because let's face it, many parents cannot be the teachers at home while trying to work themselves. And we can't expect daycares or babysitting facilities to, to teach our children either. If our kids are going for the proposed four hours, they are already exposed. Why can they not get a full day in? Uh, I reached out to Ms. Shaverhood, uh, regarding seeking advice as to what working parents could do for not only three remote days, but now the additional half-day accommodations that will force many parents into even stricter and difficult positions. Her response was that they are currently reaching out to the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA to see how they could help accommodate these children. So if it is, so if it is exposure to the teachers we are so worried about, why would we want our children, uh, subjected to even more people, which then put the rest of the school staff into a higher exposure rate? My child and hundreds of others will now be exposed to family, friends, babysitters, daycare facilities and in their school. To me, this would be even more alarming for teachers rather than just working a couple of extra hours those days. What about children who need services? Just an example, my son has not received any OT services since March. Luckily, he is not highly impacted, but what about the students who rely heavily upon this? I live in this town, work in this town and own a home in this town and I have been able to watch my oldest receive a great education from the wonderful staff within all the schools. However, my fear for the incoming kindergarteners, kindergartner, oh, my fear for my incoming kindergartner is that we are setting them up for failure. We are setting these students, parentheses, not just mine, up for a, for a complete and utter roller coaster ride because we cannot seem to grasp what other towns have. We have surrounding districts with plans in place, some remote with at least, with at least full days, others having younger kids in, in full time and the older students in a hybrid schedule. My other, my other concern is the proposal for starting students off on a fully remote schedule for the first few weeks to get them, quote, accustomed to remote learning. We learned how to do this for three months. I think we have an understanding of how to do this. I feel as a parent that this would be even more confusing for children, again, especially the elementary, the elementary age children. Getting them, getting them used to remote, then to switch up their schedule again in a few weeks to the hybrid is quite irresponsible on the district's part. Many children will be forced with anxiety, many children will be faced with anxiety and fear because their new routine they just learned is changing again. I hope you take all of these concerns and address them. If I can be of any help in any way, shape or form, please let me know and I would be more than happy to do my part. I just ask that you honestly think about the kids, everything they have been through and do what is best for them as they, as they should be the main priority. I want it noted that I fully respect the teachers and their fear as we as parents who are working are all faced with similar fear as we return to work during these unprecedented times. times as well. We have all adapted to the new rules, regulations, mask-wearing, sanitizing, and all the other new normal life has thrown our way. And then I think, is that the end?
That's it.
Yeah, well, you had highlighted it, and then it's just back and forth with you and him.
Okay, yep, that's it. Thank you, Mike. So thank you to everyone who reached out to the school committee. Thank you to everyone who came today to speak. Like I said, any email that was sent to us this week will become a part of the minutes of this meeting. All right, thanks. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Actually, I think we'll skip the minutes, if that's okay, and we'll save those for the next time, but we will go to the acceptance of gifts.
I would recommend that the school committee accept the following gifts from the Wareham Community Television Station for Adobe software, Creative Suite, K-12, in the amount of $2,445.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is reopening of schools with Dr. Stephen Mendes, but I don't see him here. So we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the fiscal year '21 transportation fees.
If I could invite Mr. Andrews to come up and just give some details, and then I know he needs to leave to get to a game for his son.
Good evening. Speak a little louder.
Can you hear me now?
Maybe try another microphone?
Hello? Hello?
That's better.
Once again, Jamie Andrews, Transportation and Facilities Manager. I know you guys are talking about voting on the bus fees as far as this year and last year. As far as last year, obviously, you'd have to give credits out to everyone. That's going to be, I think it was like $32.70 per hundred. Obviously, it goes up a little higher for the families that have more than one student. You're probably looking at reimbursing anywhere from $3,000 plus. If you decide to waive the fees this year, obviously, everyone gets their money back. I think we've totaled up almost $9,000 this year.
Oh, really? Okay.
Just, everything's been online, so this year is easier to track than last year since it's been months. So I don't know if you guys have any questions on any of that?
So what we're voting on tonight, though, is only reimbursing what folks have paid for this year, is that right?
For just this year.
So that would be, I think it was close to $9,000 this year.
Okay, and then the refund for last year is in progress, but you're not ready to do that yet, is that true? Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. How will those refunds, so if I paid online with my debit card, how will I get a refund?
Everything was paid online, so we have, we're able to track everything.
Okay.
So whatever, however the district decides to reimburse everyone.
Okay.
Since you paid online, it was, I believe it was a $3.95 charge. Obviously, we're not going to, we can't reimburse you for that. We reimburse you for the hundred that you spent, or 1.75, or the 2.25.
Okay, okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve that reimbursement? So moved. All those in favor? Sorry, Mike, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can somebody just read the motion?
Yes, April, do you want to do that?
Yes. Voting to suspend transportation fees for the 2021 school year, which would include reimbursements for families who have already paid bus fees for the anticipated 2021 school year.
Okay, I did read that. I want to make sure that the public knew what we were voting on.
Right. Well, that's why I did differentiate between this year and last year. Yeah. So you will come before us again, or the superintendent, to authorize that reimbursement? Okay.
All right.
So we have a motion. Well, we had a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second, right?
Yep, yep. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you. Thank you for coming. So the next item on the agenda is the adjusted school year calendar for the upcoming school year.
Yes, I would ask the committee to please make this one adjustment. Our school year will start for students on September 16th. This will be day one of 170 days. So right now, that's the only adjustment to the school calendar. I would ask the committee to please accept this so we can publish the calendar.
Okay, does anyone have any questions about that? So, go ahead.
So this would just be to make the adjustment and have it noted that this calendar year, just for this year, is going to 170 days instead of the 180, and that's the only change?
Correct.
Thank you.
So I just want, one question that I had already asked was about the calendar, and there could be other changes.
There could be. And if so, we would bring them forward.
Okay, I just thought that it was important that parents know now about this different date.
So are we voting on the calendar that was presented to us at the last meeting?
The last meeting, yes. So that's why it was noted in the email that it was the same calendar that was sent to us for the last meeting. There were no changes.
I can't hear for some reason.
So I believe it was noted in the email?
Yeah.
With the packet, that the item on this agenda referred to the same calendar that was sent to us for the last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So there were no changes between the last meeting and this meeting. And that is the only change to the approved calendar? It's true, okay. Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. And then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the vote on the reopening of Wareham Public Schools. Oh, thank you.
So as we started this, looking at developing the plans, what we would like to just briefly go over are the various components of returning to school, the survey results, the models that we looked at, and the building's design plans that address each of the models, health and safety, social, emotional, transportation, school year, and then the summary. So when you look at components, our number-one goal, as we looked at the plans for each plan, has been the safety, to make sure that there is a safe environment for all students and staff, and that we address the social, emotional needs for all students. We put a survey out to staff, asking them which would be their preferred model to return to school. 14.7 replied face-to-face, 38.1 was the hybrid, and 45.7, remote. We asked the parents and guardians the same question. We had 752 responses. Face-to-face, 29%. For hybrid, 35%. And remote, 36%. So just briefly, defining the plans, face-to-face, students would attend daily. The hybrid would be students would alternate between in-person and remote. And remote, all learning is online. You've been provided the detailed plans in the back-to-school packet that we have sent to you for your review. On July 5th, DUSI released Health and Safety Guidance just for reopening. These are the suggested protocols as far as if you're sick, you stay home, face covering a mask will be worn, frequent handwashing and hand sanitizing, six feet of separation at all times, and then they changed it to three feet. Isolation and protocols will be developed for students who are sick. If we are going to be in a back-to-school mode, we would like smaller class sizes. And students, they would really like them assigned to one student. Throughout all of this, though, regular cleaning must take place. So when we look at different protocols and procedures, there are some that are very basic. We know we're going to be working with staff and students about handwashing, how to wear masks. Distancing must occur. And even with six feet, it says without, they do need to have masks on at six feet. We do know that students will need mask breaks. We're creating student groups of cohorts. We'll have a COVID building person per the DUSI regulations. And one of the things that I feel very strongly about is the collaboration that must occur between our faculty and staff as we develop the protocols for our students to follow. And that has to be a joint venture. So we were given a list of PPEs that need to be purchased. DUSI created a list. We've talked about them before, of the number of gloves, disposable gans, et cetera. So in the, probably since April, we've been purchasing PPEs, and we've been, you know, gathering them, what we're going to need when we come back to school. Some of the questions that I've heard are, are you going to expect us to buy our own PPEs? The answer is no, we're not. We're going to provide you with the PPEs you need. If you need, if you want something other than what we provide you, then yes, you will. But you're going to be people, faculty, staff, students, will be supplied with what PPEs they need. We've been making the purchases. We've been focusing on cleaning processes, developing procedures, checklist, et cetera. Our custodians are signed up to go to some training through our insurance company to learn how to clean per the COVID standards. We have Plexiglas in place in office areas. We have floor decals that have been ordered. They were just received, we'll be sending them out. We've ordered hydrostatic sprayers for all buildings. So what that will do is, it's a backpack, the custodians will wear it on their back. There's a solution that goes into it, and it will spray everything in the room. It lands, and it disinfects. So we have all of that in place. We've been working with the nurses as well. We understand they're going to need special PPEs, and we'll provide them. We've been speaking with some of the special education teachers about the PPEs they will need when they're working with certain groups of students. We understand it will be a little bit different, but it's our job to provide people with what they need. So at a glance, it is expected that everyone will wear masks. It's not negotiable unless there's a medical reason, and that will need to be documented. Social distancing will occur at all times. We will not allow visitors or volunteers in our buildings during the day, nor at night. We feel very strongly about keeping the limit of people coming in contact during the day, and so that's one way that we can do it. We have hand sanitizing stations throughout, we will have them throughout the school. We're also looking at portable sinks to install throughout the school. We know that there's going to be classroom modifications, and what I mean by that will be that all of the excess furniture will be removed, bookcases, bio cabinets, et cetera. Everything comes out of the room with the exception of teacher desk, student desk, the number that will be needed. There needs to be areas around each student desk and around the teacher's space. We're working on setting up the traffic patterns within the school. There'll be one-way walking. The entrances and exits to the building will be clearly marked, and we are not going to have mass gatherings of staff and students. We will follow the guidelines. We also know that the social, emotional aspect is critical, just critical. So our counselors and social workers have been working together now, probably in six weeks, would you say, two months, coming up with plans to support both our students and our staff. We know that relationship building needs to take place as soon as possible. And so our counselors and social workers have been putting together ways to help our teachers and our staff know their students and support their students. They've developed protocols on what to look for if they see certain signs, how to handle certain situations. So they've been working in small groups. I so much appreciate what they've done. They have lesson plans, they have templates. It's just amazing what they've been able to put together. Transportation. So DUSI came out with transportation guidelines recently, and this is an example of what they would like, what they are demanding happens. There'll be one student per bench seat. So it'll be approximately a third of the bus full. In meeting with the bus drivers, some of our conversation is centered around, well, we can put, you know, we'll look for monitors to put on the bus because, as one parent shared, having, or maybe it was Brian or Deanna, talked about having bus drivers being able to keep an eye on what's going on. That's pretty difficult. And we know that there needs to be extra eyes. However, some of the concerns that were brought up in the bus driver meeting that I've been having is the fact it's going to take a seat. So that's one less seat that they can have. The other thing is, there will be no one behind the driver. The only person that could possibly be behind there would be the monitor, but that's going to go into the count. So that will take one spot away. There's a little bit of concern when we transport students because everything that a student has that they're bringing back and forth must fit on their lap. So we cannot put things on an adjacent seat, or they can't real, they're not supposed to put things on the seat next to them, because if there was an accident, it could become a projectile. So that's causing a little bit of discussion about how we're going to send things back and forth with students. So this is, this just breaks it down for you. Right now, we have a bus fleet. We have 19 buses that will carry 77 passengers. So when you look at that, you're going to have 25 passengers on that bus. That takes us to about a third. So we're about 500 students per DUSI guidelines that we can transport with our bus fleet. Normally, when you add all of it together, it's about 1,500. So about a third. Right now, with the parents that have enrolled their students, we are maxed. And because of that, we're finding it very difficult to accept variances. If we take variances, that will eliminate at least two buses. So now, we will not have enough, we're going to have 50 students probably short, by the way it goes. We've talked about cleaning and ventilation. We're working out with drivers in our meetings how we're going to address those issues. We think we have a pretty good plan in place. Once they drop everyone off, they will swing through a designated area. Somebody will step on with a hydrostatic sprayer. We will disinfect, and then in about And then, in about 20 to 25 minutes, it will be dry. They're ready to start their elementary run or the middle-high run, whichever. Students will be assigned seats. And again, we talked briefly about the bus monitor. School year, right now, we will begin on August 26. So from August 26 to September 15, it is staff-only. Staff will be receiving professional development and working on protocols, getting their rooms ready, getting ready to start our first day of school, which will be September 16. We have formed task force. We've involved many, many people in our plannings, teachers, parents. Mr. Palladino had students on his faculty, staff, administrators, school committee members. We designed the plans per DUCI regulations. We've had school committee workshops sharing the plans with you. We've been meeting with unions and various stakeholders to go through the plans, work out differences, this continues. The ordering of PPE supplies, cleaning supplies, developing protocols and procedures has been worked on and continues. And we have professional development, which will be ongoing. So the next steps are taking a vote. We will need to submit the documents to the Department of Education by August 10. At that point, we will be reaching out to parents and guardians to determine how they will have their children return to school, what their preference is. Because if a parent decides to keep them, and you vote that they're coming back in a hybrid situation, and there are parents who would like to keep them remote, we will be servicing those students as well. And we will continue working with our back-to-school plans because we're not finished. Next. And finally, what I would say is, keeping our students and staff in a safe and secure environment is our number-one mission, as well as yours, and I clearly understand that. And I know that our school year ended last year, and it was really with a sense of loss. And it has continued to be a sense of loss and uncertainty. I know that the decision that you're going to be making is not an easy one, nor will everyone agree. But I do know that the decision that you'll be making is in the best interest after you've weighed the facts. So I thank you for your time. I thank the administrators, the teachers, the faculty and staff, everybody that has participated in this gathering of information, designing the plans. We certainly could not have done it without everybody's help.
Okay, so before I ask the committee for questions, I just wanted to, as the superintendent said, just acknowledge all of the hard work that has gone into this, all of the work that's been done at all the building levels by all of the committees, that included, you know, teachers, all the staff, principals. And the opportunity that we had as a school committee to hear from you over these past few weeks. I think we're really fortunate that we had that opportunity. You know, you're not coming to us today with a plan that, you know, we just saw. It's a long plan, but we've seen the pieces of it ongoing. And we're really, really fortunate for that. And I do want to just, something that you mentioned at the end, Dr. Shevahood, that maybe we didn't hear before, that bears repeating, that there, whatever model we choose, there is still the option for remote learning. So if you're a parent or a student, and you, and we decide to go back to school at some point, there's always that option. So I just wanted to make sure that was heard. Okay, Ms. Rossi.
I have a few questions, and not all of them are, they're from like different pieces of the plan, but I think they're questions that may not have been addressed, and I didn't see them in the proposed plan, so I'd just like clarification. In regards to transportation with the busing, how will that work for wheelchair-accessible buses in the spacing? Because I didn't hear any consideration for the, how the seating, how it works when there's the bus that accepts the wheelchairs.
It's the same way. We have to use the social distancing. There'll be a limit on the number of students that would be allowed on special education buses.
Okay, and then, still in keeping with the buses, you stated that during, the windows will remain open at all times unless there's extreme weather conditions. Being in New England, we could have like a week of straight extreme weather conditions, heavy rains or snows or things like that. What will happen in that regard with a continuous pattern of extreme weather and the inability to open the windows at all during either to or from school or both?
Right. We would ask that they are at a little crack.
Okay. So another question was, I guess, sort of also in regard to a statement that had been made by one of the letters that had been said, that you had mentioned reaching out and speaking with, for, in regards to the hybrid model with the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA to help with parents. One, that would possibly increase cohort exposure, but how is that going to help the working parents who require that help with no bus variances?
Well, you're exactly right. It would be very difficult.
Okay, so another question regarding transportation is I know that there was mention of staggered times with the buses, with the different schools having staggered start times. Like, say, for example, the middle school and mine, it being in the same school, have a different start time historically. With the increased likelihood that parents will opt to drive their child to school and do pickup and drop-off as opposed to the busing because of some of the restrictions or the inability for what would have been a full bus to now be a very limited amount of children allowed on the bus, has that been taken into consideration for the traffic flow onto Route 6? And what is the policy and protocol going to be for an expected increase in parent pickup and drop-off?
That's something that we will start planning for.
Okay. Sorry, I have, I've been writing notes. So in, for example, on the proposed plan, on page 1, at least in regards to, just an example, I'm pretty sure this is standard for all of them, but in the decas one, it says sped teachers will facilitate lessons with sub-separate students with a sub-separate classroom. Now, with those sub-separate sped teachers, how are they being brought in? Is it rotating? Is it by seniority? Or are these people that aren't already for partial remote for the hybrid plan?
Part of, our plans have addressed the needs of special education students. It would be our preference to bring certain groups of special education students back on a four-day-a-week basis. I think that we've talked about this, that there are some students that would need to come back four days a week, if at all possible. There are other students that may need to come back three days a week. But that's something that we would work out with our special ed department and with, it would be based on the needs of our students.
Okay, thank you. So in regards to the protocol for possible exposure, will every possible contact be made to quarantine? How will that work? If a teacher, say, a student comes in and is exposed, their class, their cohort, will now any person that was either on their bus, in that classroom, the teacher, or any other students that that teacher may have come in contact with be forced to quarantine for 14 days?
We will follow all guidelines.
Okay. In regards to the possibility of variances, is there any way to look into grandfathered students that have historically always used variances as a reliance for after-school care? Not someone who is newly signing up for a variance, but say, a student for the past five years of being a Wareham Public School student has had the same variance to either go to a grandparents' house or go to the Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA after school. Is there a way to historically look at what their variances are and what may work for that family? Because at that point, is it really a variance? Or is it this, their normal bus route?
Well, I clearly understand that this is extremely difficult for parents, especially parents that work, and you're depending upon certain daycares or facilities to watch your child or children. Part of the dilemma for us comes when we, for example, when we have variances that goes to the Boys and Girls Club, that takes one bus for just the Boys and Girls Club. It takes one bus for just the YMCA. And when we are down X number of seats on the bus, everything is at a premium. And so the question really comes, do you honor the people who are going to be picked up at home and bus them there to and from? Or do you pick students up from their home? And then, when you have your bus for the YMCA or wherever they're going, you then have to say to a group of students, sorry, we can't take you home because there's no room. Or you're going to be delayed because we need to take students to X, Y, and Z, and then we'll come back and pick you up and take you home.
And spray it first.
And when that happens, then we also have coverage issues at school. Who's going to oversee the students that need to wait because we're running students with variances? If a student, you know, and we've really talked about, how could we get around that? The only possible way that we can come up with at this time is, if you're going to be picked up at the YMCA, and this is just an example, then that's where you need to be picked up in the morning and where you're dropped off at night.
I see what you're saying in that regard. Okay, thank you. Another question is, how is mask enforcement going to work? And what are the repercussions of non-cooperation? And also, what is going to be done for students whose parents send them to school with a mask, but it's an ill-fitting mask? And it's, they're meeting the criteria of coming to school with a mask, but not a mask that is actually going to protect their face. It's falling. It doesn't fit correctly. Every time they talk, it moves. Is there something, I mean, I know we'll have PPE, but is it, at what point do you start to, you know, hold the child or the family accountable for at least sending them with correctly fitting or dealing with ones that refuse or, you know, insubordinate and wearing them?
Well, there's multiple questions in there.
Right, but it was all mask-related, so I made the notes altogether.
Yeah. So your first question, students that do not want to wear their mask.
Yes.
It's really non-negotiable. You need to wear a mask. If you choose not to wear a mask, we're going to have a conversation with you. It needs to go on. It needs to stay on. If it doesn't, then you will not be at school.
Okay, thank you.
Students that, oh, I got to answer your other questions there, April. Students that have ill-fitting masks. I've ordered a number, numbers of child masks. I've also been fortunate enough to get a very good deal at Soft of a Grape to order cloth masks. And we've ordered a number hundreds in children's size, as well as adults. So we will be providing students with masks because it's essential they have them.
Thank you. This one is sort of school-specific for the high school. But with the Bridgewater State, the dual enrollment, they were usually in school historically until about noon time. With this half or shortened day, how is that going to affect the in-person learning for those Bridgewater dual enrollment students that would normally be in their classrooms until that time when that fits the now, the new timeline for the shortened day for the high school?
It shouldn't have any impact. Classes are in the morning. Students will have the option to stay home and complete the work. Or come in and do it in the library, and they'll pick up right where they left off. It really shouldn't have any impact because the only difference is, it's going to, they won't have as much downtime now because the class schedules are compressed. Before, they had a little downtime where they were able to, kind of like a study hall for 15 minutes or half an hour, depending on the day. Obviously, it was longer on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and a little shorter on Tuesday, Thursdays.
So for those classes, say they have a Zoom class at the same time as one of their scheduled classes, if it's during the day for their Bridgewater dual enrollment, and they're in that hybrid, on the days of their hybrid model, when they're physically present in the building, should that be the way that we go? How is that going to affect them?
There shouldn't be any conflict because of the, everything has an allocated time, and those times will be blocked off for them based on their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Shouldn't be any conflicts.
Okay. Another plant was, is our, just because I've seen a lot of, I have a lot of friends and family in Plymouth, and in the last few days, there have been a lot of issues with their hybrid plan that there, those students that have chosen to go remote are not actually getting Plymouth Public Schools curriculum. They're getting their direction from the state, from what I was made to understand. That's great to hear. But I just, so I just am just double-checking because one of the questions I was asked to ask is just to make sure that our remote is all our curriculum.
It's ours.
Okay. I knew it was, but I just wanted it to be, made sure that they knew I read the question that they asked me to ask. And my last question is, so you had mentioned that you had that extensive list of the different types of PPE that you had been purchasing, and the cleaning and the disinfecting tools, the backpack sprayers and things of that nature. Where are the monies coming out of for that PPE? And what is possibly cut from our existing budget to accommodate for that?
Well, right now, we've been making the purchases. The Plymouth County money has been covering our purchases. However, what we've had to do, because we had the COVID-19 money, 500, I believe it was $7,000 that we were given for over two years, and that was supposed to help pay for PPEs, supplies and equipment throughout the years. And the school committee voted to use that all on staffing, rehire staff. So in order to access that money, we've had to pull all supplies and materials, pretty much everything from buildings. Because we've not been able to make those purchases because we have to have something in reserve in case, when we're not allowed to make any more purchases through this funding. So we have that money that we will fall back on when we need it. The dilemma for us comes, how do we pay for supplies and materials for our schools? Because we have no money because of that.
So my last question is, sorry, I thought I had one more. The Department of Fire Services for schools requires that fire drills be conducted four times a year, and within three days of the start, that students are familiarized with exit plans in a drill. How are fire drills going to be conducted or ALICE trainings with the current COVID restrictions and protocols?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I have a meeting at 8:30 in the morning with the fire department.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Done now, sorry.
Just a couple of questions regarding transportation. Are we confident that with knowing, we think we know the number of parents that might be transporting kids on their own, that we can actually accommodate all the kids that want to come to school in the hybrid model on our buses, following the DUCI recommendations?
Right now, we have enough seats for everybody that has signed up. The thing that concerns us is historically, families have not adhered to the deadlines. And so at the last minute, we would have a number of people come forth saying, we need rides. There are no more seats.
And what will we do then?
There are no more seats.
Okay. I know there's been some talks, some of the teachers talked about, what metrics are we using if we decide to go hybrid on October 5th, or go along with the plan? Are we going to look at certain metrics? Is that happening, or what is the plan for that?
Yes, we are. In fact, we were on a DUCI call today, and the commissioner is, they're working on some metrics that we can use for the schools. I've also had conversations with the Board of Health about the metrics to use for our schools. And right now, it's a little bit of a difficult venture because we have so many summer residents. And it kind of skews the numbers. So they're going to be working with us, the Board of Health, and helping us come up with something that we can use.
So if there were some type of surge in the community or the county, we can be flexible enough within this plan to realize that, no, we can't do this if that were the case?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Just last question is maybe to the administrators. I know we're moving from a six-hour day to a I know we're moving from a six-hour day to a four-hour day twice a week. Everyone wants to get their students in front of them. How are we prioritizing that or classes and electives? And how does everyone get to see the students, I guess, is my question?
Oh, I pushed it off. Thank you. Good afternoon. From the early childhood perspective, the most important thing is relationships. That's our number one priority. So I always think of the principle of safety and then relationships. So the social, emotional piece is so important that we have those connections. I think Mr. Fitzgerald said it best is just being able to see a child face-to-face, know that they have a teacher that's supporting them in the school and out of the school. That's going to be our number one priority when it comes to curriculum. And that's why we have the SEL Committee for a DICA school. We're very proud of that. We're doing a nice training with Polly Bath right now, reiterating social, emotional work. And we're going to continue our work there. Then my third tier for our school is going to be teaching reading. I think that literacy skills is still number one. I want to make sure that they are, children are getting ready to have their sounds, their letters, forming their words, their phonics, and doing our reading. So I think from an early childhood perspective, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
And I will, and I'll bring this to my subcommittee and we'll talk through that just to make sure where I, I think I know where we're going though. That'll be our priority.
For Minnetonka Forest, the content area, subjects, well, of course, in addition to what Bethany said about SEL, we know that we need to do the teaching with the students and the math, the reading, writing, such of those content areas. We need to be able to take that off of the parents worrying about that. And then if, since the students would be going home, perhaps the Unified Arts could be done remotely in the afternoon. So they're very important, we're not eliminating them. But we have to prioritize what we feel is important to deliver to our kids.
Mm-hmm, okay.
At the middle school, I envision the same as what Mrs. Siemens said for Minnetonka. Minnetonka and middle school share specialists, so we need to work out a plan together. Math, science, social studies in LA would be our priority in person. And then to try and figure out some type of plan with our specialists with remote learning.
So would children see specialists that are during those two days?
We haven't figured that out. We were waiting for the vote tonight.
Maybe quarterly or something.
And then Mrs. Siemens and I would like to go back to our subcommittees and then try and figure out a plan. We have a little bit more of a delicate plan because we do share specialists. So we would have to figure that out with our teams.
Thanks.
At the, excuse me, at the high school, we kind of already have this model in place. It's used on the early release days. Every class would meet. We would get rid of advisory for the school year. And we would maximize every opportunity to be in the classroom. So all classes would run, it'd be on a abbreviated period. But with the mask core requirements that are in place for graduation, we have to offer all courses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I know when we vote on this plan, it can't answer every question. This plan can't, it can't possibly do that. And it's kind of more of an overarching framework as we go forward here. And I know we're not going to satisfy every family dynamic, every teacher dynamic we heard. But I know we're going to make the best decision we can make, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Right, I mean, like you said, they can't answer every question because another one that really hasn't been addressed in, it's on. So another one that hasn't been, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hasn't been addressed is toileting and how that is going to occur. So like you said, though, not everything is, we can't hit everything. And we'll have to just, at times, when things occur, come up with a plan then. My other question is, I know that some of the out-of-district schools have started taking kids back. So have any of ours started back?
Yes, we have, I believe it's 13 in out-of-district summer programs.
And so we're transporting?
We are.
And how's that going?
Fine. We haven't had any issues. One thing that I do, I think Melissa's here. If a student becomes ill at the program, it's non-negotiable. A parent has to come and get them.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure. All right, I'm going to ask this sort of rhetorically. I think I've probably asked it three times and I think Mrs. Bakayaki asked it earlier today. There will be a full remote option for those who want to do it, right?
Correct. Yes.
So for example, we had two students express concerns about that. We had Indiana Trop and we had Dylan come up. Those students, if they want to, they could participate fully remotely if they wish, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. Now, we had a discussion about the waivers on the buses. But I don't, I don't see it in here. Is it in here?
No, transportation is a separate, we've not addressed it in a written form.
So if we vote, do we need a separate vote for that?
We will need a separate vote for variances.
Are you looking, are you looking for that for tonight?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And that plan was, is designed the way that we're supposed to submit to DESI in that order with those components. And transportation isn't part of that.
Okay. Now, I said from the first workshop meeting we had that I was going to defer to whatever the task force came up with. And I was impressed with the list on the task force. I tried counting about 90 names on there and that's trying to remove some of the repeated, you know, people that are on different task forces. That's quite a list. So what I would like to know from each of the principals, if they wouldn't mind coming up and just answer two questions is, because I just want to make sure that there was consensus. Because a couple of, anyway, we received some emails and we had some people speak today that were part of this task force that were against it. And I want to make sure that there was good consensus, that they wanted to go with the hybrid model. And so I guess my two questions would be, of each of the principals, did most of your task force participate consistently? And was there strong consensus for the hybrid approach?
So we had our special subcommittees, they were all consistent. And we developed three plans that we were tasked to do. We didn't take a vote on which plan to go for because that's who I charged.
So if there was no, like, preference, then how?
Early discussions, early on, a month ago, it seemed like people were going with the hybrid. Then we had some surveys coming out with some staff members that seemed, it was more remote. So they liked that idea. So, but we wanted to make sure we satisfied the criteria that we needed to do with the three plans.
So for the Minnetonka School, who decided it was a good idea to go hybrid?
We didn't decide as a school to go hybrid.
But who did? Because we're being asked to vote on the hybrid model for the Minnetonka School. So who said that was?
No, you're being asked to vote on one of the models for us to go. It could be remote, it could be face-to-face, or it could be hybrid.
So we're just voting on the plan, to be, all three options?
You're voting on all three options. You're going to choose which option you want us to go.
And all schools will follow that.
So we're going to do two things?
Well, so, your question, so the district plan is to start the year remote, correct me if I'm wrong, is to start the year remote and move to hybrid. You've picked a date, October 5th, which could change depending on conditions. So when you say we're picking one plan, we're not picking one of these. We're, when we vote, we're voting on the plan that you've proposed, starting remote, going hybrid.
We would like you to vote on the plans. What we would like to see would be to start remote. And at some point, given metrics, et cetera, then we would like to move into the hybrid. If at any time during the school year, we would be ready to move face-to-face, then we would come back and ask you for a vote. If we were not, then we may, depending on what the governor says or the commissioner, we may just go remote. But we need a plan.
So I'm still, I'm still kind of confused. So there's three, there's three options in the plan.
Yep.
And we're going to, you know, we'll probably vote on the plan. But separately, how do we make the jump from saying, here's the plan with all these three options, to saying, okay, we're going to do hybrid?
Right. Sorry, go ahead, Mary. I think that what I'm hearing is if we vote on remote, it'll be totally remote. If we vote on hybrid, it'll start remote and turn into hybrid, correct?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that.
And does hybrid also have the potential, because hybrid is sort of all-encompassing, that say, like, in a hypothetical timeline, we start remote, we go back hybrid, half remote, half in-person, say, starting in October to January? And then if in January, we're given the clearance by the graces of a new year to start in 2021 with a clean slate and can go back full person, that's encompassed in this possible hybrid plan?
We would go back full person. We would come to you and say,
We're ready.
We have the blessing, we're going.
But with that, that being said, if the universe decides to stop imploding, would we be able to still allow for those in higher-risk situations? Should we be eventually able to go back, say, just as a generic date, January, that we could go back in person? Would remote learning still be able to be on the table for high-risk people without penalization?
Yeah, I think we have to.
Yeah, I would say so. I think it's a new age in education.
So, I'm still confused. Let's say we all vote on this and then we walk out of here today. There's no more votes, right? So what's going to happen?
We would like you to vote on the plan. You have three options. You can vote face-to-face, you can vote remote, or you can vote hybrid. If you vote hybrid, our suggestion is we're going to start remotely. And at some point, we arbitrarily picked a date of October 5th. It could change. We will go to bringing students back in a cohort, two days a week, one day off, two days a week. That's our hybrid model. And if you vote hybrid, that's what you're voting for.
All right, so we're not voting on all three. I thought, the way I was worried, it sounded like we're voting on the plan to get voted up to the state, but there's three different things on here. You weren't supposed to vote on one thing.
Yes.
Yeah, that's all I needed to hear. Okay, sorry.
And of course, we're changing the model because we're where ham.
Right.
We don't think, you know, jumping right into hybrid is necessarily the smartest move. But we don't want to deny the fact that we need to see our kids, so.
So that is, that is a distinction to be made, though. Because if we vote hybrid, it's hybrid after remote.
Correct.
It isn't clearly stated on this document.
No, it is, not yet. The superintendent's letter, it will, but we needed the vote from the school committee before she can write her letter.
No, that was not a criticism.
No, I know. No, I'm just explaining.
The format that you needed to be in.
And my question sort of wasn't answered in the sense that I wanted to know, who wants us to vote for the hybrid? Because I didn't hear that the task force wanted us to vote for the hybrid. Who wants us to vote for the hybrid?
Do you still want to hear from the schools?
I do, but I'd like to.
I'll move back if not.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from, I'd like to have Mrs. Siemens come back, though, because I'm not done with her.
All right then.
Oh, boy.
So, I mean, I'm just picking on you because you were first, you were the brave one that came up first.
I learned my lesson.
So, great, we had a task force and we didn't take a vote or even a poll amongst the task force on what was the best option. So why am I being asked to vote for the hybrid? Who's, where is that coming from for Minnetonka schools?
It's not coming from Minnetonka at all. When we, when each subcommittee worked on the plan, we had the in-person, the hybrid, and the remote. Couple of weeks back, it seemed like the hybrid was the plan that people liked. So we were putting all of our information and details into that. After, and that was before any surveys were done. Once the surveys were done with parents, with staff members, that information changed. And it seemed because of concerns that people had in social distancing and not being able to have six feet distance, we went more towards the remote. I would have to hire 11 teachers to do a hybrid by, and I don't have the staff, I don't have the classrooms. So right now, for, we had decided the remote would be the most, would be the option that we would like. That wasn't a formal vote, but that was in our discussions that we had. Now, there may be a core group of parents that are going to, and I've heard from some, they're going to do total remote no matter what. That reduces the number of students that I have to plan for.
Okay.
So that's how a hybrid could work.
All right. So would you be starting hybrid?
No.
You wouldn't?
No.
Not starting, I'm sorry, with everybody else, with everybody?
Minnetonka is going to follow what all the other schools do and that's based on the vote that you are taking. If you vote remote, we're going remote.
Oh, yeah, but, but I guess, I guess, when I hear Dr. Shaverhood say, you know, we're looking to go hybrid, is it really just Dr. Shaverhood asking us to go hybrid? Or who's asking us to go hybrid?
Why don't you hear from the other schools?
Okay, thank you.
I think that when they were all here the first time, when we first met, they all indicated their preference.
No, when, okay, you say they, I agree. The principals, the principals certainly said, okay, hybrid sounds good. But I want to put a lot of stock in what this task force had to say and they're not here. So I'm trying to see if there's strong consensus for the hybrid model among the task force.
I believe you heard from me, my preference was to have all the students back day one.
This is true, yeah.
But that's not conceivable and it's not safe. But, you know, it's great that we keep hearing about what people want. I have the pleasure of having kids that can kind of speak and have adult-like conversations. And 80% of them want to come back in some capacity. Now, obviously, we have to do what the district does and decides to do. And it seems like we have a pretty solid plan in front of you in regards to starting online and then going hybrid. But, you know, I think it's, I keep hearing, what do these people want? The kids, it's about the kids to me. And, you know, we'll do whatever's best for the kids and we'll do whatever the district says is best for the district. But I'm excited about the potential for, you know, the online and hybrid.
And I love that, but I want to, I want to put some stock in the people we pay to, you know, do this work and it's great for the kids to want something. But I want to know what's good, what's best educationally from the people that we pay to come up with, you know, these suggestions.
Right, and we're here.
Right, no, no, right. So, so was your task force, did they have a strong consensus for the hybrid model?
They had a very strong consensus for the hybrid model.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
And they met consistently?
They met multiple times.
No, no, meaning that each member, you had the same members usually?
They picked their top choice. We basically have a return-to-school safety committee. And it turned, it worked out actually perfectly. They all were allowed to select one of the three options to be on a subcommittee for that, met multiple times, obviously, and created the plan. Obviously, it was tweaked a little bit. But they all fell strongly for, obviously, a full return and online or a hybrid. And ultimately, as we realized quickly, the full return wasn't conceivable based on the state regs. So that knocked it down to two, hybrid and online. And obviously, it seems like we may have the best of both worlds with the plan that's in front of you.
No, and that sounded great when I heard it. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My task force met consistently. Most of the people showed up every single time. Every single time, the plan was sent out to everyone and they were able to comment and provide feedback. And I had a very large task force. Anyone that wanted to join could join. We did not have a vote. So what we were given the task for, from DESI, was to develop an in-person, hybrid, and remote plan. DESI has said, bring back in-person as many students as you possibly can safely. That's why we came up with hybrid. We knew we couldn't do in-person fully. It's impossible. It's not safe. I would prefer in-person with everyone. But we can't say it's safe. We can say we can safely bring back half of the population. And that's, but I don't have a consensus on my team. But you have all of the teachers' consensus. The majority of my team was the teachers. They provided that information to you, so you know what the teachers are thinking. So I'm not going to speak for my whole committee. It appeared that the parents on my committee were for the hybrid model. And quickly, we learned on the task force, by doing the task force, that it was impossible to go full in-person.
But you keep saying we went with the hybrid. So, I mean, your group, your task force, it sounds like, you know, leaned toward the hybrid.
I can't tell, I didn't have a vote, so I don't want to speak for them. I can't tell you that every single member on there, one spoke today. So clearly, she you that every single member on there, one spoke today, so clearly, she doesn't believe in the hybrid, you know?
Right, yeah, no.
So I'm not gonna speak for them, but we did send out a survey to staff, and you can see those results by building, so that's why, I mean, we didn't do the task force. We also did a survey for parents, and you see those results. So it wasn't like we, our task force had to come up with the best plans possible, which I think they did a very nice job.
The hybrid?
No. No, you're putting words in my mouth.
Sorry, I don't mean to.
Yeah, but you want me to say, yes, they all believe in the hybrid. That's not true. I didn't, I didn't ask them to vote on the three plans, so I'm not gonna speak for them. I don't feel comfortable doing that. We came up with three very logical and awesome plans. The in-person is not safe and not possible, in our opinions. That was a consensus.
Okay.
But that's as much as I can give you.
Okay.
If you want my opinion, I'd be happy to give it to you, but I can't speak for the task force.
No, and you did. I mean, before, you were very strongly for the hybrid.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. At Deacon School, our 15 members were pretty excited about the idea of, we haven't mentioned this word yet, but phasing in. Just like the state did, we went into a different phases. This is essentially what we're voting for. If we do a phase, we begin with remote, we have that opportunity, we have that baseline, so we can go back and forth. So if we build a strong remote, and we phase in children safely, we can still backtrack without that, without building that, and going straight to a hybrid. We won't have the time, you know, to build that. So that's what our committee came up with. And again, just like, I'm not sure about the exact opinions of each of these 15, but in my PowerPoint that I shared with you weeks ago, from my survey, I can tell you that 86% of my teachers are comfortable teaching virtually in the fall, and I can tell you that 68% of our whole staff is comfortable returning to school in the fall. Okay? So, just to get you there, but our task force, what was called a committee, was very comfortable with the idea of phasing in carefully, safely, so we have time. And we're still working on this, Mr. Flaherty and School Committee, too. I've just added a new member to our task force as we speak. When parents get involved and want to be a part of it, I invite them. Staff, I have another staff member who joined two weeks ago. So this, we're still continuing to work together, because the hybrid model, once we vote, if we do vote for this, is still not completely fleshed out. There's still, as Dr. Shaverhood said, a lot of work to be done.
Okay.
And it will be done.
Okay.
Effectively.
Thank you.
Safely.
Thank you for that reference to phasing in. That's really helpful, yeah.
I'm good.
Well, let me just let Mike finish, and then... Are you, do you have more?
I'm done, no.
Oh, you are, okay. Go ahead and go.
So I, just in reference to, I know Mike was asking what some people's opinions are one way or the other, and I do understand and respect that no one can speak for, except for themselves, what you guys prefer, and what the students prefer, what the staff, what everyone prefers. My question is, when we arrived today, there was a significant number of staff in multiple facets outside with signs, asking for remote learning, trying to promoting themselves to stay home, to keep themselves, their family members, their students, safe, especially until there is more, I guess, documented evidence that things are on a downtrend consistently, instead of on the rise, as has been stated in Massachusetts. So my question is, we know that a lot of our staff are all union-based. Do you foresee any issues with whichever way we vote in a way that might be inconsistent with their preference could cause a problem?
Well, we're currently in negotiations with our unit, with our W E A. However, one of the things that I will say would be, the phase-in approach allows us flexibility to meet, and to meet the needs of students and staff in a safe environment. And the "safe environment" is the key phrase.
Thank you.
I would just add, just looking at the survey results themselves from the teachers, 46% said they wanted remote, whereas 53% said they wanted either face-to-face or hybrid, to have the kids in front of them at some point. So even though we saw a majority of people that were from the remote outside today, the actual majority, the 53%, I know it's not a great majority, but 53% voted to have kids come in front of them in one form or another.
I have, I just, just to make a comment on that, the results of surveys have been extremely frustrating, right? Because we're getting the same around number for every single thing we ask. You know what I mean? It's like either a split or third. You saw the parent data. So no decision, right? What do you do with that? There's no one way. Everything's flat, and it's across the board, no matter what. So it's a little frustrating. I had a question, and now I forgot what it was, because, oh, so, okay, so if everyone is done asking questions, we will move to the vote. I do just wanna make it clear, and I asked this five minutes ago, and I'm just gonna ask it again, just to be very clear. If I vote to approve the hybrid model, kids in Wareham are not, are going back to school remotely until the hybrid model is safe.
So if you vote to go hybrid, we will start remote. At some point, we will go back in a hybrid face-to-face model, not full-time, but a hybrid. I cannot tell you that date. Right now, an arbitrary date is October 5th, but that could change, and that needs to be made perfectly clear. That is not set in stone.
Okay. And so that decision will be based on statistics, as well as agreements with the union and other things, okay?
Yep.
Right, and that's because we wanna ensure it is safe.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So I'm glad you were clear on that, and all I would ask then is, if you wouldn't mind making the motion that you would like for us to vote on, so that we know exactly what you're looking for?
Right. I would like the motion to say, we would like to go back in a hybrid setting. We will begin remotely, and at some point, we will then return to a hybrid or a face-to-face and go in and out in a cohort setting. I know, that's kind of, thank you. Phew, I didn't wanna repeat that one.
Second it.
Any other discussion?
Well, I motioned.
No, and Mary seconded it.
Oh, she did, okay.
I know you can't hear, so you- Any other discussion?
Yeah, so I just have a question. So a lot of the points that were brought up, should the hybrid get voted in today? A lot of the questions that were asked that wouldn't be able to be fully implemented, or plans completely logistically laid out because you were waiting on the result of our vote, will, how soon will any of those concerns be addressed to the public so that they know that this plan has covered every single thing that is still waiting for our vote?
Right. Well, you know, once there's a vote taken, a whole new set of tasks will set in. We're going to need to survey the parents to see how they will be wanting their child to return to school. We need to see what staff are going to be able to return to school, when that happens, and what staff do we need to support who are not able to return to school because of medical reasons. We need to be able then to set up, how do we support our students that are remote for the full year? So we have a process to go through. We need to work with transportation. It's going to start tomorrow. I can't give you a date. All I know is, everything's going to start tomorrow.
I wasn't expecting a date. I just wanna make sure that, you know, a lot of the parents that have been looking for, you know, the transparency, are looking to us for what's happening with the schools, when is this going in, when is this, so that when each phase that gets sort of hashed out with more finite detail, are you going to release that information as it comes out, or is a whole, once the plan is fully collected and ready to roll out?
Right. We've placed this plan that you received, it's on the website for people to see, that will be submitted. The pieces that are not in there are the ones that you don't have either, that will be added tomorrow. So that will be placed on the website. I think one of the most important things, though, that we need to start doing at building levels, is to start having conversations with parents. So we're going to be looking for our building principals and staff to start looking at, how do we reach out? How do we answer the questions that people have? We know we need to share details. We just need, now that we have, we will have your plan, then we'll be able to start doing that.
And we'll certainly keep it on our agenda. It will be an ongoing discussion here.
Which is great, and I, again, just wanna say thank you to everyone who's put in all of the time to hash out the three different plans, all of the parents and the teachers who have expressed their concerns on every side of the board, and brought up things that we may not have ever even thought of from their own perspective. And to just know that this is definitely, probably, the hardest vote, I think, we'll collectively have as a school committee and as administration to put together, because there's no one-size-fits-all solution, and no matter what we decide, there's going to be unhappy people, and I respect and appreciate that, and I know that we're just doing what we can for the most amount of students and staff.
You know, if I could just add something real quick. You know, part of this plan also was taking into consideration what we were being told at D E S I. We anticipate there will be money being released by the feds in the very near future. We were told directly that if you're remote, you might as well forget having access to that money. Now, maybe he backtracked a little bit today, not really sure, but the people that are face-to-face or hybrid stand a better chance of accessing the money. So that's, you know, so there's some other back things going that have led us to where we're at. We also wanna make sure our students, if we do have, for extracurriculars, our students have that ability to participate in extracurriculars, and we need not to be in a remote setting for that. So there were many factors that influenced us coming to recommend this hybrid, but to help move this in is why we asked to start in a remote setting.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. And if there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained? So it's unanimous, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's one more item on the agenda that we can go to quickly, the approval of the bill and payroll warrants.
Yes, I would ask that you approve the bill of payroll that's listed on the notes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 5-0-0. So again, before adjourned in the meeting, I would just say again, thank you to everyone. I look forward to this ongoing conversation for the return to school. Now, I'll take a motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry.
I just wanna express my thanks to you, because this was not an easy decision. I appreciate the questions that you offered. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to come out in the summertime when we didn't have meetings, but I know that you didn't take this lightly, and we do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Flaherty, you know, wanted me to let you know that graduation has been scheduled Saturday at 4:00.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, we're adjourned.
Thank you.